Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, June 3rd, 2020, regular meeting. All received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? I do have one change on page six. A motion was made by Councilmember Kelly and seconded by Councilmember Leach to approve Resolution 2020-45. It says amendment, sanctuary city, that should be dedicated city. Okay? Is there any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the June 3rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes with that change? Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council?
My name is Stacy Michaels and I'm the president of the Sock Center Chamber of Commerce. And I am here just to give one last plea before you discuss this evening the prorating of the liquor licenses for our bars. At the chamber, one of the mottos that we've adopted is we can, and we're asking everybody to do the things they can do. Find what it is you can do and do it. Last council meeting, a comment was made, well, we're worried if we do this for the bars, then how do we help the theater? How do we help the gyms? Well, you're right. By prorating the liquor license, you can't help the theater and you can't help the gym, but you can certainly help the 10 bars that the letter that was submitted represented. And I think it's important to focus on the small things that make a big difference in our community. And we can do something, and as a city, you can do something. This is in your power to make that change and do that prorating. That reduction in their fee can go a long ways, whether it's to pay for supplies or the next order from their liquor vendors, whatever the case may be. But I just asked the city council to take it piece by piece. And right now, you have 10 bars that signed that petition and to do what you can to help those 10 bars. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? State your name and address, please.
My name is Pat Winters. I own the Bear Trap here in Sock Center. I'd just like to piggyback on what Stacy had just mentioned. First of all, thank you for adding it to the agenda this time. And second, you know, I hear the argument about helping all businesses. I struggle with if we can't help everyone, we won't help anyone kind of message that that sends. But I would also encourage the council to be more proactive with the small business community, be more proactive with the Chamber of Commerce to help all the small businesses in town. This has been unprecedented, and every business in town has suffered from this. And I think there's an opportunity here for the council, for the Chamber of Commerce, and for all the small business owners to come together and come up with subway to assist everybody. Because otherwise, Sock Center just becomes a drive-by town. You know, a place to get gas on your way to somewhere else. And Sock Center has something special here. And at the heart of it is the small business community. So again, thank you. I think it's a reasonable request. I appreciate your consideration of it and hope you vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Okay, the public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We will move on to reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Report. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I got May 2020, some of the highlights here. Looks like the chief highlight, we had 11 alarm calls. We did 68 business assists. Anything from stopping in to checking doors, finding open doors. We assisted 17 other agencies total, including Todd County, Stern, State Patrol, Melrose, some Human Services. We're out there making 43 assistant contacts on the street. Looks like 13 people were cited for not having driver's licenses. We took seven harassment complaints, which is kind of high. Seven juvenile problems. 18 medical calls. We had a high number of vehicle crashes, seven vehicle crashes on Main Street and other streets. That being said, with all the vehicle crashes, we stepped up our enforcement for cell phone use, wireless device uses, and we issued 21 tickets for that, which is probably the highest we've ever had for writing tickets for that. But we're seeing a spike in it. I think most of our crashes were distracted driving crashes. So we came or done on that a little bit. Nine unwanted person calls, 11 welfare checks, 176 verbal warnings are some of the highlights there. Other than that, as you can see, the call numbers were down in May. That's just with everything else going on right now. They were down. The calls were up from the previous month, which is normal with the weather and the time of year, but we were down significantly for just even calls in service. But that's everybody with the COVID stuff. Looks like the last couple of weeks now, things are picking back up. If you drive through town on a Friday afternoon, things are getting back to normal as far as that goes. So I think, I think we're going to start, our numbers will start picking up now. Now that everybody's coming out of the woodwork and it's getting warmer, warm and hot out. Right now, currently, it's the current update, things going on. We got the two part-time guys rolling. They're training now. One guy with the experience, Officer Grabmeyer. We're going to wrap his training up pretty quick because he's been a cop for 12 years. He knows the gig, he just how we operate. And Officer Stoll's field training now, he'll be, he'll be going for a little bit of the training. So that's going good there. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? On the, on the 21 use of wireless device, were most of them because of the accidents that happened or?
No, most of those are.
Or just, we noticed it and you.
We notice it, we stop them and we're getting tickets.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I notice you said you stepped up enforcement on that. I hope we're going to keep it at a high level.
Yeah, we're going to keep, you know, we're really working, you know, most of the crashes are speed related and distracted driving related. So we've been picking up that. There's going to be a presence, every presence here in the next couple of weeks. We're going to do a couple of different crosswalk. I guess you call them stings, so we're going to be out there hitting those crosswalks because we've been getting some complaints on that too, as far as people not paying attention to the crosswalks. So we're going to get out there and we might even throw a decoy out there for a little bit just to keep people on their toes.
Let me know if you need a volunteer.
There you go, there you go.
Orange shirt does.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Public Works Department? Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Some of the activities we've been up to in the past month. Park Road, the parts came in for that contractor, so he was able to complete the air patching. So all the holes are now filled and those do have a one-year warranty, so we'll see how that holds up as far as future use on other roads. We did do a couple of other areas in town too, to see how they would hold up on some bigger holes and things of that nature. The crack ceiling is scheduled to begin on June 24th, weather dependent, and be completed on June 30th. The chip ceiling will follow that. Crosswalk painting began this week and will span about two weeks to get them all completed. MINDOT is going to help assist with traffic control on Highway 71 next week when we start doing those crosswalks. Storm sewer outlets, we started to clean the culvert outlet areas around the storm sewers. This includes tree removal, sediment removal, and rock replacement as necessary. So there's a lot of those out there and we're working those into the schedule as we can. The alleyways behind the post office and then the further one to the south has been completed by Riley Brothers. Those look very nice. We excavated in Arian Hickman Drive to repair a storm sewer that was leaking. The repair was made and the road has been filled with asphalt. And we've been using that new patching trailer, which has been working out really nice with overnight heat and just more efficient heating around that thing. So that's been very helpful in getting some of these projects done as well. The park stuff, tree planting began. We're close to 40 trees planted now. Some are going in boulevards and others are located throughout the parks and the campground. We're going to continue to monitor and water these trees on a weekly basis. This is part of the EAB grant that we received this year. Splash pad has had some maintenance issues this spring. We've ordered and replaced a few different parts so far. Everything is working currently. However, we are waiting for one more part to install. So once that gets in, we'll put it in. But it's been working, but there's been a lot of issues so far this spring with that. A kayak rack was built by the Public Access. The kayaks and paddle boards that were donated by Centricare have been placed on the rack and are available for rental at the campground office. So we look forward to that. The beach area has been basically completed. It's being used quite a bit so far. The grass is planted around the beach and sidewalk now, so that's about the only thing really to wrap up is let that grow. We did install some signs and the PUC helped install some lights down there to brighten it up a little bit at night. We are, we did order marker buoys and rope to put in the water to protect the swimmers just from boats coming in there. So once that stuff arrives, we'll install that in the lake. We assisted the baseball association with some maintenance and creating a new pitching mound at Tower View Park so they can start doing some more baseball practice up there this summer. Repair was made to a leaking axle seal on the 1600 mower and the new zero-turn mower has arrived and is in use. The bathrooms continue to be cleaned daily. The conservation park bathroom received a new toilet and the main water line coming into the building was leaking and that's been cut off and repaired. And we only had one other graffiti incident this last month and that was on the bridge on Highway 71 over the dam there. There was quite a bit of stuff that got spray painted underneath, but that's been covered up now and cleaned up. Airport, public works staff replaced a yard hydrant that was leaking out there. And then last week, while receiving a load of avgas, we discovered that the tank is vapor locking when it reaches near full capacity. So we have scheduled this with a contractor to diagnose and get that repaired so it works properly next time. And Jackson Zenzin started two weeks ago now, so he is doing well in our department. And that's kind of a broad overview of everything we've been up to along with our normal maintenance activities. Are there any questions I can answer?
Questions? Comments?
Beach looks really nice.
Turned out good, yeah.
Nice to see the splash pad open too.
Yeah.
Great job.
Good job, Ben.
Thanks.
Thank you. 6C Planning Commission Report. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a copy of the Planning Commission meeting agenda from June 9. It was a rather short meeting. We did not have any public hearings. And so you do have a copy of three months of building permit reports. So I believe that's March, April, and May. And then also the zoning permits from the beginning of the year till June 1st. And the first four or five months of the year so far, we've been really busy with construction and people remodeling or additions. I thought during COVID, it might come to a screeching halt, but it didn't. We've been very busy.
Good. Any questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to action items. Oh, City Engineer Report. Didn't see you over there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just to update you on the city projects. 2018 capital improvements project, we were able to pave a couple of weeks ago. Things are looking real nice for the pavement. All the concrete repairs have been done this spring. We still are monitoring the grass situation up there. Obviously, we're in a very dry period right now. I have a meeting scheduled this Friday with the seating contractor to basically review where that seating is at, maybe come up with a watering schedule, basically help along through this dry period. But we are, we are still withholding some retainage on that project from the contractor for the seating. So we'll continue to do that until it does get to an acceptable level. For the 2020 CIP project, they were able to get the tree removal done on June 4th. And this last week, they were able to start on Batuna Street reclamation and some concrete removal items, at least for the Elm Street South portion. Phase one, we're kind of calling that. And then next week, they're looking at getting some temporary water strung out for the residents and utility excavation, maybe in the next week or the following week to start on that. So that's all I have for those two. If there's any questions?
Questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to action items. 7A, approve updated summer rec agreement with Infinity School District 743.
Okay, the city has historically contributed funds to Sock Center Public Schools to help with the cost of providing summer rec opportunities to our youth. The current agreement ran from 2017, 18, and 19. Earlier this year, I reached out to the school regarding summer 2020 activities. And at that time, in discussion with the school, they thought that, given to the uncertainties of whether they'd be able to conduct a program this year, that we would just forego 2020 and have a new contract for 21, 2, and 3. Well, now that some of the programming appears that it's going to happen, they got back in touch with me and they are proposing a 70% contribution for 2020. So we need to determine if we want to reconsider that 2020 contribution in full or at the 70% or some other number that they had requested. So that's what's before. And what you have in your packet is actually the proposal from the prior agreement. Because this new one has been more verbal. And then if the council approves it, then we'll put it on paper.
Okay. Questions? Concerns?
Have they started with any activities?
The activities haven't all, haven't started yet, but they did get it all on rev track now, so people can start signing up. Like swimming is starting in July and I think there's some baseball starting. Do you have children in it?
Yeah, there's some boot camp going now and strength and conditioning that started as well tonight, so they do have things going.
It depends on what the activity is of how soon they can start it.
Okay, any other questions?
Approximately, when do they start? How long after school is out?
They usually start pretty close after school gets out. And I, I'm not sure if they're going to, I know they have to start later if they're going to run later, but I, I believe they're just going to have an abbreviated season and that's why they're requesting the 70% and not the full amount.
Will it be a 70% of the?
I can't say, I don't know if they will or not.
I'm just.
No, that's, that's their calculation. And that's how they came up with the 70%.
If I remember right, most of the time, the summer rec program is usually done by the end of the first week of August. Because then after that, that's when the fall sports start cranking up, the football and cross country and stuff, and they don't want that interfering, so. Would be, one of the ideas be to give them like a certain amount this year and then start a new contract for 2021, 2, and 3?
We, we could, we could do it either way. We could have like a 70% or a 50% or whatever this year and then two full years. Or we could just have this year standalone at a reduced rate and then start the full program again next year. So that's really in your court, whichever way you want to go.
Okay. Any concerns or comments? My opinion is that we give them a $6,000 contribution instead of the $9,000. And then negotiate a new contract for 21, 22, and 23.
I agree.
Because everything's still up in the air. We're not even, a lot of, listening to the State High School League and stuff, they're not even sure they're going to have all the sports for this fall yet. So to tie ourselves into a contract without knowing how this is all going to shake out, I think we can do that before the next summer of 2021. So, but.
So your concern would be committing to 21, 22 at $9,000 with the discounted level this year? So you want a standalone year?
Do a one standalone year and start a new contract when we get a better idea of what's going to actually happen. If you think that's.
I.
You know, the council's got to make the motion, so.
I mean, either way, we approve it for three full years next year or, you know, or a discounted rate this year and then two full years at 9,000. I mean, here, their 70% would be $6,300 versus $6,000 proposal. So I mean, I wouldn't have any issue going 70%. And, you know, if they do have leftover in their budget, they can carry that forward as well. I mean, with what our commitment is to them.
I'm just throwing it out there. It's up to you to make the motion, so. What's the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion to do the 70% proposed for 2020 as a standalone and then we'll renegotiate the agreement for the next three years following that.
21, 22, 23?
Yeah, so.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Joe. We have a second by Diane. Everyone understands the motion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three in favor, one against. 7B, approve prorated credit for 2019-2020, or 2019-2020 liquor license fees.
The city received a petition on June 1st from its on-sale liquor license holders requesting that the city consider granting them a credit for the 2019 and 20, because the license runs from July 1st to June 30th, for that license fee for the days they were unable to be open under the governor's opener. In addition, they've asked that the city revise its prior deferred payment plan for the 2021-22, or 20, 2020-21 payment, which is the upcoming one, by extending it a minimum of 90 days plus grant flexibility to extend it further. The current deferred payment plan that you had previously approved split it into three parts, July, August 15th, and September 30th. The city collects the on-sale license fee as a revenue to help offset the additional public safety costs the city incurs with the license holder establishments, given the nature of the business. It's kind of like a user fee. It's traditionally more acceptable than raising taxes over all residents and businesses to cover those extra costs. Because the city has not incurred those costs during the time the businesses were closed, you may want to consider granting the rebate on a prorated share back to the establishments. Several other cities and counties have implemented some type of discount. Sterns County more locally, they calculated their fee on a paid per day basis through July 1st and rather than giving a check back, they just, they gave it as a credit to the upcoming one. Other cities have rebated to June 1st and now a couple more have done. One of the cities in our, in our near future, or near group that I'm in, they also did a discount on the upcoming renewal. So it's kind of all over the place of what different, different cities are doing. Whichever route you choose to consider, really want to not be a real arbitrary number, but tie it to something and that is where the public safety costs that we did not have to incur because of them not being open, that gives you kind of a valid reasoning to support that proration. So we have nine regular on-sale licenses at $1,750 a year and one on-sale nonprofit license at a reduced rate. So I put a couple of different options down there. The last one being just a blank, so you can fill in the blank. So option one would be no credit. Option two, there's a credit per day to June 1st, is $4.80 a day, so that'd be $3.50, $5.20. And if you do option three, that's a credit to July 1st, it would be $504. And then option four, if you choose to select a different option. So we have kind of a two-part action here. The first one would be to select the option for the credit or rebate. And then the second is to consider the additional 90-day deferment for the license payment. And so of these, they'd be credited toward, a couple of them have already paid their full fees, so they would get a check back. But the ones that haven't paid, it would just come off what they owe.
Comments? Questions?
How many days were they actually shut?
So the, the June 1st date, they were 74 days from the time that they had to close. So that was, it calculated at $4.80 a day. That's where we came up with those dollar amounts. And then if you calculate it out to July 1st, that's like 105 days. And June 1st, they were able to open somewhat. Yeah.
Any other comments? Concerns? I don't have a problem with the credit per day as far as base. The $4.80, 80 cents a day makes sense. I don't know if I'm willing to go all the way to July 1. I think June 1 would be better. But that's, like I said, is up to the council to make the motion on that and how they want to go about doing it. If you want to take that off of the next year's. Some of them already have paid to 2021, so they would get a check back. So. I don't know if anybody else has got any comments on that or?
I guess my thought is I, I think a rebate is warranted. They were shut down by no fault of their own, it was government action. So a rebate is, is warranted in this case. As far as the number of days, 74 versus 105. You know, 74 days got into their opening. But realistically, for 10 days, I think that was pretty much of a joke of an opening from where the governor came from, in my opinion. First through the 10th with outdoor dining was, didn't make any sense to me. We're still at a 50% capacity requirement. I think that, you know, most of our establishments can accommodate that. But I think we're, working with our business owners and, you know, it's 20 additional days. I'm, I'm open to the July 1st day. Work with our, our business owners here and knowing that they're impacted by this. And I see it more as a credit to the 2020, 2021 versus a check back from last year's that just discounts this year's payment is, or this upcoming one would be my thought process on it.
Okay.
I guess I would agree with Joe on that. I think it should go through July 1st because it was what, when did they open their indoor? Was that the 15th?
10th.
10th.
Yeah. And then that was at a 50% capacity.
Correct.
You know, that's kind of. I mean, how much business did they lose when everything was outside? And they just didn't notice something was out there?
Weather wasn't real cooperative outside.
Yeah, that too. So I guess I would, I would have just given back that July 1st. I think it'd be good.
Yeah, and I brought up the June 1 just to create some conversation. I'm not, you know, I could go either way and it didn't make any, it doesn't make any difference. Either way, we're going to give them, I think we'll give them a discount off of next year's. Probably, I just wanted the council to, because sometimes if we all agree, we, nobody says anything. So I just want to. Start somewhere and that's the reason why I did what I did, so.
Even if it is the wrong place to start.
That's right. I've been told that many times, Keith. So, do I have a motion on the table as far as credit or rebate or?
I guess I will make a motion to go with option three of a credit to the 2020, 2021 license fee payment. Go through July 1st. At the $4.80 a day for a total of $504. And as it relates to the 90-day additional deferment, I would say we continue with the existing payment plan as it does grant 90 total days from the due date of July 1st. Be my proposal.
Okay.
Your motion?
We have a motion.
I'll say.
Keith is second. Is there any other discussion? Everyone understands the motion? Call the question, all those in favor. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. 7C, approved resolution 2020-47, authorizing purchase of edger.
So the 2020 budget includes funding for the purchase of an edger. It's an edging machine for edging sidewalks and curbs. It does the top of the curb where it can go along the sidewalk. Public Works Supervisor recommends we go with the, the easy edger, and it's more expensive than the Ventrac, but he gave several reasons why it's a better option for the city. And I did put pictures of both types. We're not buying the whole machine. We're buying the attachment. So the one has the attachment on the side, and then the one has the attachment on the front. So when you can look at those, when you hear, understand what I'm talking about. So the Ventrac is built specifically for a Ventrac machine. It would require a lot of modifications to make it work with our tractor. The other one needs a two-inch square tube mounted to the tractor, which we can manufacture in-house and easily mount to the 2025 tractor that we already own. The Ventrac operates with weights that are removable. The other operates with a hydraulic cylinder to provide down pressure in edge areas that are hard. The visibility is better with the selected unit, and it's right next to the operator's seat instead of out in front of the machine. So you can see the one that, you can just see downright beside you. That is the one that he is recommending that we purchase. It has a dual-action pivot system that will allow the edge of the concrete a lot better than the Ventrac. And with the edger, they'll be able to maintain sidewalks and curb lines greater efficiency than renting a hand edger. Be able to maintain these edges on a timelier basis with reduced labor. It used to be we would take several people, hand edging, it would take a lot of time. This is going to be like 10 times faster than that. We can do a lot more distance in a shorter amount of time. It'll clean up the sidewalks and the curb lines. It makes it look very nice. It keeps those weeds from growing over the curbs and allows the department to do it more often. And the wear parts can be sourced from a U.S. supplier, so that was one concern that some people had. Ben is here to answer any other questions. He proposed have this for a long time and keep it clean. The only one issue that we do have though is that we do have the two prices and they, they range dramatically, and that is why he gave the reasons why he is, he is proposing the more expensive machine. It's $4,850 versus a Ventrac, which was $2,535. As a side note, we're not really interested in the 2,535, so if we don't do the better equipment, we're just going to withdraw altogether from purchasing it because it's just not feasible to work with what we have. So, that resolution is before you, 2020-47. These are really the only two kinds of machines that are out there for this purpose. And so that's why we have it before you tonight.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Concerns? All the, everything that Ben listed here as far as reasons, I think, gives us good reason to go with the gyro path edger. Now, one of the things is, is being as a parts person for how many years, anytime we had to go out of the U.S. to get parts, if you weren't getting them, that thing wasn't making you any money. And it was not the right thing to do when I think our focus is U.S. now, as far. So I think that's one of the best comments that could be made. Is there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2020-47, authorizing the purchase of the gyro path edger EE20.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. 7D, approved updated COVID-19 prepa, preparedness plan.
This is our third update to the COVID preparedness plan. We have to present that for approval. The prior plans have focused primarily on employee areas, but now more and more things are opening to the public. So this change is a supplement, and the supplement is for public spaces. And as you, you can read through it, it just talks about how we take care of the things that the public are exposed to. Any, anything from in the campground, the park bathrooms, the kayaks, the fish cleaning house, the playground equipment, splash pad, shelters, tables, benches, ball, ballfields, dog park, community garden, it, it, city library. It lists our precautions in all of those areas. And we, as well as other businesses, we are required to submit this to the state by the 29th of June. So they're going to get, I think, four plans from us. So, but we're just asking you to approve this updated plan, and hopefully this will be the last one.
Questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve the updated COVID-19 prep, preparedness plan?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. 7E, approved contract with Premier Pyrotechnics for fireworks display.
At the last council meeting, the council authorized moving forward with conducting a fireworks display. And the, the display that we were talking about was July 17th. That was the day that we were going to have them during Sinclair Lewis Days. We, or we were open to a later date depending on social distancing guidelines. The attach agreement with Premier Pyrotechnics provides the groundwork for the display. They've also provided the necessary insurance. On receipt of the agreement and deposit, the display will be locked in. The city will be the intermediary to receive any funding and forward it to the contract holder. So this was part of that whole fundraising campaign. I do have the agreement in front of you. It is for a $15,000 display with the goal of actually raising more money than that, and then that would be, go to a future display. Now, the one thing I wanted to tell you is I did get a phone call from them yesterday, and they said July 4th opened up if you were interested in a July 4th instead of July 17th. So that's on the table as well. So what I'm looking for tonight is just to approve this contract with them, and then the next action is actually to issue ourselves a permit. So.
Questions? Comments? I know it's really tempting to have fireworks on the 4th of July, but the GoFundMe page is ready to go. It just hasn't been set up yet on that, and I know a lot of talk in the community is still the 17th. And that way, we won't be disrupting any dates as far as when Sinclair Lewis Days will be next year. So that way, people, at least, we have a continuous date.
Yeah, I'd agree. I'd like to.
I think it'll give us, give them more time. It really makes sense, rather than just disturb the whole calendar on a yearly event because of this.
Makes sense.
So, are there any other questions? We approve the, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Premier Pyrotechnics for the fireworks display?
Sure.
Motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved the fireworks permit.
This is the fireworks permit that we have to approve every year. Usually it's the SOCC Center Chamber that, that gets the permit. This year, it's the City of SOCC Center, but we still need to issue it. Still needs to be signed by us and the fire chief and, and go through those same requirements. So I'm requesting approval and issuance of the fireworks display permit for July 17th then.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the fireworks permit?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. 7G, authorized temporary reduction in admin fee lodging tax CBB.
The Convention of Visitors Bureau's primary source of revenue is the remittance of lodging tax revenue from the city. The city retains 5% of the collections for administrative costs. Due to the pandemic, lodging tax receipts are down about 41%. This is making it difficult for the CBB to meet prior obligations for advertising. As a way for the city to assist the CBB, because they are a city board, the council has the option to reduce the admin fee retainage on a temporary basis. This would, could help the board continue operations and meet those prior obligations. A reduction to 1% for the 2019, 2020 would generate to date $2,472.76 to the CBB, which is about 5% of its annual operating expenses. So it's not a great deal, but it is a little bit of a shot in the arm to help the CBB meet those obligations. So what I have before you is a reduction in the admin fee retainage to 1% from, for 1119 to 123120.
Questions? Concerns? Is there a reason why we're including the year 2019 on that, or just to make the number larger, or?
It, it was just to back it up a little bit, because in 2020, the number would be about $200, because there's been so, such low collections so far in 2020.
Okay. Is that, what's that do to our budgets as far as our audit, or, you know, we did the audit and stuff, but?
No, that, this would be an expense against the lodging tax in there, so it would show for this year, then we would have more expense than revenue.
Okay.
So it will show that way on the, at the end of the year. It'll show that this money came off in 2020. But if you approve that ahead of time, then that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay. Any other questions? Concerns? I'm, I sit on the CBB Visit SOCC Center Board, and money is really tight right now with the, some of the funding that is coming in. They're making do, they're being, they're able to pay the wages of pan boardmen and keep things going, but most of the advertising for the year has been, has been discontinued. There's still some in the fall that hasn't been cut yet, but anything that would be helpful would be good. So. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the reduction in the admin fee retainage to 1% effective 1119 to 123120?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Joe?
I'll second.
You'll sec, Diane, I'll second it. One comment. At the end of the, this year, then it will go back to the 5%?
Right, this is just a temporary reduction.
Just a temporary, okay. We have a motion and a second. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Campground reimbursement policy, COVID-19.
With the campground closed for the month of May, we had a lot of reservations. They were moved to later in the year, moved to next year, Memorial Day, or they were canceled with refunds. And then the council approved those refunds because the campground was closed. At that time, the council also voted that the existing policy, that the deposit is non-refundable, should, that should remain standing should the, um, once the campground is open. So right now, we have, you forfeit one night's rental if you cancel the reservation, and so that still is in place. One individual paid, reserved and paid a deposit for 10 sites during Sinclair Lewis Days, and she canceled those, and she's requesting the deposit back. And of course, that's $30 a night times 10 sites. So it was a $300 deposit, which is contrary to your pri, prior action on non-refundable deposits if we're open. 13 other campers have canceled for COVID reasons, such as canceled family trips, canceled county fair, and they have forfeited deposits totaling $462.47. So if the city grants a refund for the 10 Sinclair Lewis Day sites, it should also consider refunds for the other various COVID reasons. The total dollar amount of deposits that were unable to be moved to future reservations is $762.47. That includes that $300 deposit. So if the city council approves for 2020 to grant refunds for these COVID-related reasons, that that would be our total cost to date of 76247. We have rented the sites back out. That is one thing that, you know, usually when we come to a request like this, I get asked. So we have rented all the sites back out to other renters or other campers. In fact, we're quite full, actually. So. So it's really, are we going to suspend the refund policy for COVID-related reasons for 2020? That's what I'm asking you right now.
Questions? Comments?
And so none of these folks wanted to move their reservations ahead. They just wanted cancellations and refunds.
These people that have canceled, there are things like family reunion. The, the miscellaneous ones have not requested a refund. It's the one that had the 10 sites requested the refund. But if we're going to do for one, we kind of have to be consistent.
You have your firm again.
Pardon me?
You have your firm again.
Yeah.
And there's, it kind of sounds like they wouldn't be able to come back and give them that.
Yeah, and the one that had the 10 sites, we actually had reached out to them to see if they wanted to schedule for next year, and they didn't. So.
Okay.
We did give them that option.
Any other comments? Questions? As far, my opinion on it is, when they reserve the campground, irregardless of the reasons it's in there that there's no refund for one night. But I don't want to get into, as long as COVID is around, who is the person that gets to decide whether it's COVID-related or not? You know, I could say anything and say, well, due to COVID, I can't do this, this, and this. And we turned into a, you know, a ball picking up speed, running downhill, you know, because we opened that door. I don't believe in changing a policy just due to the fact that someone didn't read the black and white on no refund policy.
And we, we are, are recording whenever anybody cancels. Like, they'll say, well, I had a family reunion scheduled, and everybody's elderly, so we've canceled the event. Or I've had other ones say that I had a family vacation going cross-country, and we can't go now because of that. So, I mean, they are, we are collecting the reasons why. I, I think they're probably fairly legitimate reasons that they've been telling us. So I don't have a high concern with people taking advantage of it if it's for just a short period of time. But our policy does say, you know, you forfeit that, and so that's why we're here, is if you're either going to stick with the policy or we're going to deviate it for, for this period of time. You know, these are different times right now.
Yeah, I, I think with the unprecedented times we're in, and, you know, the events were canceled. You know, we've re-rented the sites. It may be a, a show of good faith to these individuals to keep them interested in our campground for future rentals as well. You know, if we're not going to be out, the revenue source, since we've re-rented them, and again, you know, we don't want to see that, you know, like you said, the ball, you know, picking up steam here with, you know, people start suggesting it's COVID-related. I think if they're going to cancel them, they probably would have let us know by now going forward as well. And who are we to tell somebody that they have to come kind of thing, or make them, make that choice if they're uncomfortable to? And, you know, personal finances may be impacted. So I, I'm open to actually doing the refund since we've re, re-reserved those sites.
You know, we could retain a, a cancellation fee to cover costs. I mean, that wouldn't be a, you know, a lot of campgrounds will do a five or a $10 cancellation fee.
Do we have that?
Pardon me?
Do we have that, or?
We don't right now, because we just, the, the cancellation is the whole deposit right now for the whole night. You have a one-night's deposit, you have to pay, and we retain that whole deposit. So we don't have a fee on top of that. That is our fee. But if you're going to give the deposit back, are you going to retain a few bucks to cover the costs, or we're just going to let it all go? That's something that.
One of the things is, is the reason why that whole deposit thing came into play was because without a deposit, there was, they'd look ahead and see that the weather was going to be bad, and it was going to rain all weekend, so then they wouldn't show up. And then we'd sit there with the chance of somebody, you've taken, saying, hey, could I have that spot? No, because they're still coming in. You know, so we were losing revenue as a city, or as a campground. So that's the reason why that policy went into place. And I understand it's different times now, you know, with the COVID and stuff. But I personally have had three events canceled, and I haven't received any of it, any of the money back. It's too bad, so sad.
I, I agree with you.
And rescheduled. So it's kind of like, okay, do we start doing that? You know, it wasn't my fault they canceled it. I wanted to go, but yet it was canceled, and I'm not getting a refund. I'm all the money. So.
I think the caveat here is we actually were able to re-rent them all again, so I suppose this would be greatly money if we kept it. I mean.
Well, we were closed for a whole month.
I know.
Yeah, that, you know, that's.
Unless you got somebody's work and everything to try to find somebody else to reschedule it.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting you bring that up. I could see a retainage, you know, administrative fee to keep a percentage of it. I, I guess I, I lean more towards the refunding of it, but it would be nice to have that retained to, to at least recapture some of our administrative costs.
I just don't want to sit there and have to decide, wow, is it really COVID nineteen or not?
It's, it's not that so much, but after time goes on, we're the ones responsible for the city budget, too.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, next year, we come along and say, oh, we're gonna have to raise taxes by this much because of the shortfalls, because of refunds and everything else. It all trickles down back to us, it's whether or not we want to bite the bullet then or not.
The, the, just I wanted to clarify, you know, they, they're all saying COVID reasons, but the seven sixty-two total is all the cancellations that we weren't able to reschedule. So, you know, whether they, you know, a lot of them said these are all the different COVID reasons that they did. But there could be one or two in there that just flat called and said, I want to cancel, and didn't give a reason.
All right.
So this includes everything that we weren't able to reschedule.
Well, do I have a motion either way, or?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we stick with the policy, the way it's written, no refund.
Okay, we have a motion to stay with our no refund policy? Do I have a second? Chair will second. Is there any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Keith and Dice for lack of a majority. Do I have a motion, another motion that wants to be put on the table?
I'll make a motion that we grant refunds on these sites with a administrative fee of ten dollars per site of refund. Yeah.
On all of it?
On all, yeah, all cancellation sites. We retain ten dollars.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Keith. Any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries three in favor, one against. Okay. Seven I, approved road closure Relay for Life.
Representatives from Relay for Life are requesting the closure of Park Road on August first from six to eleven P.M. for the Relay for Life Luminary Event. They typically hold the event at the fairgrounds wherever there's a scheduling conflict with another activity on that date. At this point, it's uncertain if the event will be drive-through or walk-through due to the gathering restrictions of the American Cancer Society, not necessarily our restrictions, but the American Cancer Society is, has their own restrictions. The road would be closed from Oak Street to the boat access. Luminators will be set up along the roadway, and cars will be allowed to either drive through, or people will walk through to observe the event. They may have a small little ceremony. They just are uncertain at this point, but they do know that they want the road to be closed for that period of time. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve the road closure for the Relay for Life, August first, from six to eleven P.M.
Questions, concerns?
Yeah, we won't get any, this should not interfere with the campers' expectations.
The campers are all in on Friday nights generally, so this is a Saturday night, so they can go out willow.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the road closure for Relay for Life?
I'll make that one.
A motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Have go to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, paid claims of eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents, for a total of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. We have paid claims slash payroll, made checks, four hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. We have resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-eight, accepting contributions of two thousand dollars to be allocated to the fire department from Black Oak Wind LLC. A hundred dollars to be allocated to the fire department from John and Christine Felling. Fifty dollars to be allocated to the ambulance department from Mark Haskamp. And three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents to be allocated to the parks, which is the kayaks, paddle boards, paddles, and life vests from Center Care Foundation. On behalf of the city, I want to thank those people for their generous donations. We have a request from the downtown bars, Mustang Next Door, Crazy Jays, and Corner Bar for a temporary extension of premise permit and road closure for Sinclair Lewis Day Street Dance on July eighteenth, twenty twenty. I don't know if that name is okay to use, Sinclair Lewis Day, since it's canceled, but that's fine. The road closure request is a one-block area from Main Street to Oak Street. Eric Kellerman plans to close the road at two P.M. for the street dance and reopen at three A.M. following cleanup. The fenced area will be from the Palmer House across the Guyman's and at the intersection of Oak Street. The street dance road closure permit will be sent to Jody Tech at the county after council approval. Request from Eric Kellerman, DBA, Next Door Bar and Lounge LLC for temporary extension of premise permit for eleventh anniversary party with music on August first, twenty twenty, in the back parking lot, next door, and Food Shell Parking Lot from six P.M. to three A.M. And then due to COVID nineteen and cancellation of the Stearns County Fair, the Sock Center Lions Club would like to amend the previously issued gambling permit by removing the pull tabs and only having the raffle on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and to be located at eleven eighty-one Main Street South Sock Center. Is there any questions or concerns related to the consent agenda?
On the number E, are they gonna run the music until three in the morning?
No, no.
The, the music ends at, is it twelve-thirty?
Yeah.
Something like that? Yeah, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty is when they're done, is three A.M. to get everything cleaned up and backed up.
Okay. That's wasn't sure.
No, that's fine. Any other questions? I just have one comment. On the street dance, just so everybody knows, that's based on whether or not the county allows the road to be closed. We're not certain which stance they're gonna take.
And, and more on the reason that it's, it's called the Sinclair Lewis Day Street Dance in here is because our city code allows us to close it for certain number of events, and one of them is called Sinclair Lewis Day Street Dance right in our city code. And so we're tying it to that.
Okay, that explains it. So if the county would deny the permit to close the road, then we'll more likely see another request to close a side road or something like that to let this still happen, so. We, at the moment, will just go from there. So there's no other questions on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items.
I do have one informational item. It's again from Charter Communication regarding their channel lineup changes, and that's in there for you to read. And also, those four kayaks, and there's four of you, it'd be a great photo op down there in the lake. So, just saying.
We did that this morning.
No, no, I'm talking in the lake, in the kayak.
Oh, okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.